I'd like to call the May 2, 2017, meeting of the county commissioners to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please rise and join us in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier this week, former county commissioner Doris Geetzenhanner passed away. Commissioner Geetzenhanner accomplished much during her years of public service. She helped organize the incorporation of the town of Woodfinn and then was elected to serve on the Woodfinn Board of Aldermen. In 1976, she ran for county commissioner. She spent $47 of her own money in that campaign for cards to hand out and to pay the filing fee. She was the highest vote getter of all the candidates. She would go on to serve on the county commission for 16 years. During her time on the county commission, she became known for her effective leadership on many issues, including support for public schools and increasing teacher pay. She was known for her accessibility and always returning any contacts from her constituents. She served on the state county commission board for seven years, driving to Raleigh for that board once every month. And she spearheaded changing the county's motto from "Men to Match Our Mountains" to "A People to Match Our Mountains." Doris's daughter Debbie continues to serve on the Woodfinn Board of Aldermen. Let us hold a moment of silence to remember the life and service of county commissioner Doris Geetzenhanner. Thank you. And thank you all for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Turn this on to make sure that everybody knows that City-County Plaza on Thursday from 12 to 2, it's a National Day of Prayer, and there will be representatives from the county and the city and various faith organizations. So we encourage you to let your friends and family know, and if you're available, to come out. If not, we encourage you to pray for our country and county and all the work that's being done. The need is great, and we encourage you to do that on the Fourth. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to read the ethics reminder for the board, and then we'll have public comments. I do, for the proclamations, we'd like to suggest we move the foster family appreciation recognition up to first on the proclamations. A lot of folks are eager here. All right. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? Seeing none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on at the end of each meeting. Moving on to public comment, the time for individual comments of the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to participate in public comment this evening? Yes, we'll start with the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to share a comment. Are you all right?
Absolutely.
I'm going to read because I don't want to miss anything important. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Ally Clibow, and I serve as the coordinator of the Buncombe County Aging Plan. I'm here this evening with Bill O'Connell, a volunteer member of the ACC. Thank you for agreeing to support the Age Friendly Communities Resolution appearing in your consent agenda. I'm proud that Buncombe County has a long track record of going above and beyond to serve its older citizens, both by contributing county dollars to the federal and state aging funds and by approving ambitious and comprehensive aging plans for more than a decade. Your vote tonight is both a promise and a mandate that we work together throughout Buncombe County and over the long haul to become more and more age-friendly. In addition, this resolution proclaims May 2017 Older Americans Month in Buncombe County. In that proclamation, you have called upon all our citizens, from business and faith leaders to philanthropists and educators, to recognize that older adults constitute a valuable human resource and to engage older adults in all aspects of community life.
Sort of like the old wrestling matches with tag teams. As Ally said, I'm Bill O'Connell. I'm also speaking to initiatives in your consent agenda, the Age Friendly Communities Network. Appreciate that we have that on the agenda night, and I also want to say how needed it is to be on the agenda in this position, speaking to this at the same time we have so many kids on the other end of the age spectrum. I think it says a lot for our community. So in passing this resolution, though, you really accomplish two things. First is, as we enter Older Americans Month, it's an appropriate recognition certainly to give to Buncombe County citizens in terms of the value they contribute to our community. However, the second part of that resolution, as you probably have noticed, is the business end of it. And that's the one in which you essentially task those of us engaged in older adult services planning to up our game. By that I mean, in directing us to join the network of age-friendly communities, we'll be seeking out guidance from other communities across the country who excel in integrating older adult services into their community. By your direction, we'll be looking for benchmarks, comparative measures, with which to be able to come back to you and report how we stack up relative to those communities. And finally, by your direction, we also have portfolio, if you will, to invite other leaders, stakeholders in the community to join with us in that planning. By that I mean folks from the clinical medical community, the public health community, education, business, housing, and other community services to join us in creating plans for the future, plans that always in the past have not necessarily cut across the silos of our responsibilities. And our job will be to try to bridge those. So five years from now, Buncombe County should be known as more than just a popular place to retire, but also a model for a community on aging and being a little bit... So I will end there and thank you again for your help with this, and I appreciate you making this happen over the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill and Ally. Great.
Hello, my name is Sean Maddox, and I live in Weaverville. And I am disabled with hearing and strokes, and I need to stop driving, but we have no public transport out of Asheville, outside of Asheville. And we need county and city collaboration now. Public transportation is a civil right, and, you know, how would it be to be transported from Weaverville to Asheville in 20 minutes by public transportation? That would be one of my goals, and hopefully it could be one of the city and county goals That's primarily what I have to say.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Roberta Madden. I live in Black Mountain, North Carolina, and I'm here to speak in support of the Equal Rights Amendment. We sent each of you a copy of a resolution that we would like you to consider, if not tonight, perhaps in your next meeting. The Equal Rights Amendment has 24 words, and it's been around for 94 years and still hasn't made it all the way through. So we think now is the time. The 24 words are as follows: Equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. Now, who could disagree with that? Nevada recently ratified the Equal Rights Amendment, just last month, and there are other communities and other county commissions throughout North Carolina that have expressed support for this. It is before the legislature. It's Senate Bill 85 and House Bill 102. And the other communities that have expressed support are the City Council of Durham, the Board of Commissioners of Durham County, also the Board of Commissioners of Orange County, the City of Winston-Salem, and several small towns on the East Coast. We believe that our Board of Commissioners is extremely progressive and that you would be in support of this, and we ask that you consider allowing time for a short presentation, perhaps at your next meeting, so that you would express support for this. And we thank you very much for your consideration.
I'm just here to piggyback on what Roberta said. My name's Amanda Kraus. I've been working on passing the Equal Rights Amendment for about a year now, starting in Washington DC and doing a march from New York City to Washington DC to raise awareness about this. All of those states have already ratified, though, so we need to really be one of the states to take hold of this. And I think by passing a local Buncombe County resolution, we'll be able to raise awareness about this. If all of you would take the time to watch a film called Equal Means Equal, it will elaborate on all of the reasons why the current laws do not protect women fully against being discriminated against. It can be found on iTunes and Amazon. It's called Equal Means Equal, and it's directed by Pamela Lopez. If you check your email, you'll see I sent you details on all of that information. And I have here 921 signatures on petitions from Buncombe County residents supporting the Equal Rights Amendment resolution here, so we'll continue to gather those signatures until we can hold a beautiful presentation here for you all. Thank you so much.
Hi, Jerry Rice. Is there anybody else? Jerry, is there anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad we're getting a good start on the budget measures. It may be second to May 31 last year. That's good. Thank you for doing that. First of all, I don't think the TV and the media should be the one announcing all this stuff out before you hear it. We should have had a budget workshop rather than having a budget message first. We don't know what we're doing. We're listening to the county manager, that one needs to know their stuff. Now, number one, individual property owners is the key here. They are the taxpayers that's holding this thing up all the way. Small business, you've heard of Sebo, small business, they are the 1%, okay? 1%. You heard that? The taxpayers individually are the one that is paying the bill. It ain't the smaller business people. The general fund budget has increased 10% over the last 10 years, 10% a year. We can show you the figures if you want. Whose budget has increased by that individually or anywhere else, and what has kept up with it? Inflation sure hasn't, or retirement or nothing else. In 2014, $296 million in the budget to be presented on the general fund or the amended budget. 2015 and 2016, it went to $321, that's a $24 million increase in two years, over the two years. Now, plus, what are you adding to the revenue neutral this year? Revenue neutral should be at 49.9. I've revised my number. I said 50 cents a month ago. It's 49.9 with the new number. Debt service, $538 million. We need to have either the county manager, or you take the county manager's credit card and pair them up, $538 million in the hole, okay? So we need to be looking at the budget ordinance, the budget message. You need to be going back and look at historical and see just how much this budget has increased over time. Now, it's not time to stand here and debate all this at one time, but if you want to talk individually, I'm happy to talk to you. Figures don't lie, but liars figure, they say. So when you start talking about numbers, don't tell me. We can bring the jack in the box out at any time, and you can throw my numbers out, but I'll compare your numbers with anything the county manager's got, and let's see who's right. Got that? Your tax rate, 49.9. Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Okay, nobody disagree? So we're looking for the lower the tax rate. The people individually, okay? They're carrying the load, 97%. It ain't these big business people. Great stuff, you know? I'm going to debate it. Thanks.
Good evening, county commissioners. Timothy Sadler. And as some of you may know, I helped run a nonprofit effort to help veterans, actually homeless veterans here in the community for about two years. I did that work, and my contact information still is on some of the resource materials for different groups out there, and I like it that way. From time to time, I get a call from someone in need of some support, and I'm always happy to help that individual. Just yesterday, I got a call from a homeless veteran. Her name's Vivian Suber. And Vivian had been referred to Home Rebound to the SSF or SSV program, and she is likely to get support there. Unfortunately, it takes time for that process to be completed. So it typically is three to six weeks turnaround time. Well, that three to six weeks puts a veteran out in the street and homeless, and that is exactly the case of Vivian. She was lucky enough to have Alice, who's behind me, help with a one-night hotel room, and of course, that's up tonight. We're really blessed here in Asheville to have the resources that we have for veterans. We have one of the best VAs in the country, and we're regarded as having some of the best resources. But that being said, there's still a gap, and it's a small gap, that needs to be filled. The VA has a program where they'll assist a veteran in being put up in a hotel if there's a health issue, and they're in town for some time. And Alice has actually taken an initiative to speak to the VA about extending that program to help a homeless veteran that is waiting to have their application process for SSV. We are here tonight to ask if there's a commissioner that has a relationship with an administrator at the Charles George facility that we could sit down and have this conversation. If we can figure this out here, it will be a great example for the rest of the country because what's going on here is not exclusive to Asheville. I have Alice behind me. She has a little more context to offer to this matter, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, commissioners. I've been before here, here many times before, last week, oh, I'll be faceless this time. I've been addressing homeless situation in this county for over 10 years now, and it seems like mostly women veterans are falling to the cracks. This is not the first case with Vivian Suber. I've had numerous cases. Some of the cases got so sprout with the ineptness, I don't flatter me the word I can say, of the VA and the homeless organizations that are helping veterans, that they even leave the state to find other resources. Women veterans are difficult to draw out because they find resources how to survive. They're couch surfers. And when HUD changed the definition of homelessness and eliminated couch surfers, that took out the homeless entire population of women veterans being homeless. So in my efforts, starting with all the home women vets as a nonprofit, to help specifically homeless veterans and those who are at risk of homelessness, I'm encountering a lot of difficulty getting the resources to these women to help them. And I appreciate any assistance I can get from the county, and I'll be talking to the city as well. To allocate these resources is difficult for the veterans because emergency services is not there. They go for emergency services. We'll come back next week. We'll have a decision of what we can do for you. You're homeless, you know, this particular veteran had a home. She's lost resources because she couldn't find employment here in Buncombe County. Thank you.
Yeah, Chairman, I just want to suggest that we have their information because there's levels above us, you know, that are actively involved in the debate here locally at the county.
Timmy can help tonight around the emergency and then set up that meeting later.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Are there any other members here who would like to speak during public comment? All right, seeing none, if you'd like to...
I'm sorry, sure, come on.
I'm Charlie Blyssner with Asheville City Schools. I'm sure my boss wonders what I'm doing up here. Many of you may not be aware that Joe Bly passed away this weekend, this past weekend. Joe was a postmaster in our community. He was an MC for 20 years with one of the festival events, and he came to our public comment for not years, but for decades. We didn't always agree with him, but he was always passionate about the kids and the fate of our kids, so I just wanted to read his name and his memory into the record tonight. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda and follow our remainder of the agenda. Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to proclamations. We're going to start off with the Foster Family Appreciation Month recognition, and Commissioner Joe Belcher is going to help out with this along with Angie Garner. So y'all would both please send your votes to the...
Turn those kids loose. So I got a 16-month-old granddaughter, and when I hear that little sweet voice, that's what I hear every time. So I was ready to tell you to turn her loose and let her run. We've had adults do that here, so I'd be okay with the kids doing it. But I have had an opportunity to do this several times. My daughter and my son-in-law had an opportunity to foster, you know, so I understand the relationship. My son and his wife also adopted, you know, my grandchild during the process. Actually, they were involved in the process of everything, so pretty exciting to be able to do this. So we've got, looks like we got four families that we're going to recognize, and what I'm going to do is, it's actually four different awards. I'm going to read each one of them, and you can come up and present them individually, and then you want to speak, if you remember you want to speak, then we'll introduce your awards. Okay? All right, so we'll go ahead and let me read the first one, and then let us know what the award's all about. The Buncombe County Commissioners recognize an honor of Brandy Lamb and Brandy McKenzie. I hope I got that right. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board expresses its sincere appreciation by presenting you with the Creating Impact Award. Y'all come on. You know a pepple when you see one. For bravely facing the challenges that impact children, helping them onto success. Your outstanding commitment to children and families makes our community a better place. Thank you for being a true example of our motto, people to match our mountains, and it's signed by all of the commissioners.
So I just want to say a few words. The Brandys, that's what we refer to them as. They were only licensed for probably a few days before they took their first placement, and it's going on two years now. And these ladies worked diligently with service providers on a weekly basis and have seen this in the world turn into quite the vivacious little thing, so we appreciate the work.
Okay, next, Buncombe County Commissioners would like to recognize and honor Sarah and Ryan Spurling. Y'all give him a hand as they come up. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board expresses its sincere appreciation to you by presenting you with the Nurture Back to Health Award for fostering children in need. Your outstanding commitment to children and families makes our community a better place. Thank you for being a true example of our motto, people to match our mountains, and it is also signed by all commissioners. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I want to say that the Spurlings have recently adopted a little girl from us, and they also have another child. Well, yes, they're still fostering, but what I want to say is that you're a nurse, and you took time off from your job to help nurture a child back to health, and now they work diligently with the birth mom with this little child, and in fact, attend church together and medical appointments as well. So thank you.
Those babies are not bothering us, so y'all, I'm giving it a thought. This is the highlight of the evening. So Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor Gina Hager and Kim Libowitz. Y'all come on up. She's been wanting to say hi to everybody since she got here. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this board expresses its sincere appreciation by presenting you with the Shining Supporters Award for helping children find their light again. Your outstanding commitment to children and families makes our community a better place. Thank you for being a true example of our motto, people to match our mountains, and again, it's assigned by all the commissioners.
Recently, Dr. Little Girl from us. I apologize. And again, I have worked really hard with the birth family navigating through some difficult times. And we appreciate the work that you do and know that everything you do is in the best interest of the children.
Say hello. Bunkham County Commissioners recognize and honor Angela and Chris Anderson. If y'all are right here with the brother. On behalf of the citizens of Bunkham County, this board expresses its sincere appreciation by presenting you with the Perseverance and Dedication Award for providing safety, stability, and dedicated care that has helped young people toward success. Your outstanding commitment to children and families makes our community a better place. Thank you for being a true example of our motto, people to match our mountains. And again, it's assigned by all the commissioners. Thank you.
The Andersons are in a unique position. They have been lifelong resource for these girls. And these two girls here are super successful. They're straight A students, they're athletes, and the oldest has just been accepted into college and is going to be joining the cheerleading squad. I just wanted to say a few words again to, you know, again, these are just four families who represent many of our families that serve our children here in Bunkham County. And we really appreciate the hard work and dedication that goes into the difficult, challenging, rewarding work these foster families provide to our children and to our birth parents, working with them as well. I think that's good for those that are here. Not only are they here to work with the children, but the work that they put in helping to get a lot of these biological parents healthy and reuniting these children as well. So thank you.
Thank you all for being with us. We're all here. All right, next up, we have the proclamation this month, and Joey Martin will be receiving this, and Commissioner Robert Presley will be presenting it.
Don't send the chance to without the grant.
No, that's kind of a fall right there.
As the county of Bunkham proclamation a motorcycle awareness map, whereas Asheville and Bunkham County motorcyclists have band together to actively promote a more positive image of motorcyclists, promote fair motorcycle legislation and to ensure motor freedom. And whereas these motorcyclists are also working to eliminate judicial attitudes towards motorcyclists and promote participation in public service programs. And whereas these motorcyclist organizations and participate in motorcycle safety, education, and ride training program, and public awareness program. Whereas the Bunkham County chapter of the Concerned Bikers Association, North Carolina, has requested that the month of May be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month. And whereas this board feels this is the best interest of all the citizens to promote motorcycle safety awareness and to foster the sense of brotherhood and sisterhood among all users of our county roadway. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for this county of Bunkham as followed, that the month of May 17 be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month. Bunkham County. Thanks to all the citizens, Bunkham County are hereby encouraged to join any motorcyclist in an effort to improve traffic safety and increase motorcycle awareness. And this is a proclamation be effective upon this adoption, adopted this day, the second day, May 2017, by the Bunkham County Commissioners, Chairman Newman. Thank you.
It was a tough act to follow. This is probably close to 20 years we've been doing this. We appreciate you doing it. I kind of miss hearing Bill Stanley talk about his old red pant. Folks, a lot of you are aware, we do go into driver's ed. We're in our 11th year of going into driver's ed classes in Bunkham County, Haywood, surrounding counties to try to make these beginning drivers motorcycle aware. We've got our big yellow billboards going up now. Look out for those all around the county, in Haywood County and Henderson County. And folks, anything you can do to help us make our driving public motorcycle aware helps us out. North Carolina is the 12th leading state in total motorcycle registrations now. Bunkham County is in the top five in per capita motorcycle registrations in state. And we have a lot of riders here, and local riders, we appreciate it. Folks, we have a lot of visitors. You know, we have thousands, if not 10,000, visitors that come to this area every year to ride our roads around here. So anything you can do to help us make the driving public motorcycle aware, we appreciate it. Thank you again.
And finally, we have the proclamation of YWCA Ashville Month. Beth Masca, it's Mr. Alan Frost will present the proclamation.
I feel especially honored to be giving this proclamation. The YWCA is one of the most unique places in Bunkham County. When you read, when I read this proclamation, after I read each one, they do it not 100% but 150%. I've never seen an organization or a place that touched their lives, whether it's infants learning how to swim or seniors, folks learning how to come off of type 2 diabetes and the programs they have. It is a wonderful, wonderful place and it's a feel-good place. And the programs they have, the little money they ask us for and the programs they give us are extraordinary, whether it's women trying to go back to work, whether it's working with AV tech students and childcare. So. And you look a little like Holly. The County of Bunkham proclamation, WYWCA Asheville Month honoring their 110th anniversary. Whereas the YWCA of Asheville is celebrating its 110th anniversary in May 2017. And whereas YWCA's mission is eliminating racism, empowering women, promoting peace, justice, freedom, and being equal. And whereas, for 110 years, the YWCA has worked to bridge gaps in access to education, economic opportunity, health and wellness for women, children, and families of Bunkham County. Whereas the YWCA is a partner of Bunkham County and other community groups to address institutional racism, sexism, and poverty in our community. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of Bunkham County Commissioners. One, that May 2017 be designated as YWCA of Asheville Month in Bunkham County. Two, that we hereby commend the YWCA of Asheville in its mission and efforts to eliminate racism, empower women, stand up for social justice, help families and strengthen communities. Three, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted the second day of May 2017, Bunkham County Board of Commissioners, signed by Brandy.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Masca, and Polly Jones is a good friend. I am CEO of the YWCA of Asheville. Chairman Newman, County Commissioners, and Dr. Green, thank you for this proclamation celebrating the YWCA's 110th anniversary. I will briefly share some highlights of our rich history that lead up to our current partnerships with Bunkham County today. Starting in 1907, the first location of the YWCA of Asheville opens as a boarding house for self-supporting women. 1913, a group of African-American women called the Employment Club begin meeting to find jobs and provide support for working black women. 1923, the first official Phyllis Wheatley brand to the YWCA formally opens to offer housing and employment resources for African-American working women. In the 1940s, the YWCA Young Wives Club begins offering group childcare during its meetings as the importance of childcare to women's economic sustainability becomes more evident. In the 1970s, to address the fact that pregnant teenagers were being forced to leave school, the YWCA starts the continuing education program for teen mothers. They advocate for a policy change, and within five years, this program is absorbed by the Asheville City Schools into their optional program. 1973, the YWCA nursery services expand to women in the wider community by opening the Drop in Childcare Center. 1985, high dropout rates for pregnant parenting teens motivate the YWCA to create Mother Love, a program to support teen moms and encourage graduation and further education. 1987, in collaboration with the Bunkham County Women's Commission, the YWCA Women's Center opens. The center offers a job club, resource library, workshops, and referrals. In 1999, a new choices program which provides case management, access to childcare, group support, and job skill building to serve women living below the poverty level who want to achieve economic self-sufficiency. Jumping ahead to 2014, the Getting Ahead Program begins to empower women of all ages and backgrounds living in poverty to take control of their financial future, improve the lives of their families, and better our community. And most recently in 2016, the YWCA Empowerment Childcare, formerly the Drop in Childcare, expands access to childcare for student parents through a new childcare partnership with AV tech. The YWCA also provides onsite childcare at the New Family Resource Center. As the proclamation notes, the YWCA addresses gaps in access to childcare, education, health, and wellness. Investments from Bunkham County Department of Health and Human Services currently support the Mother Love Program that serves 33 teen parents in eight high schools in Bunkham County. Of the Mother Love participants receiving case management last year, 27 of the 33 teens graduated high school or advanced to their next grade. We are also grateful to host a community connector and receive additional Department of Health and Human Services support for our Empowerment Childcare Program. Last year, Empowerment Childcare provided 9,849 hours of free childcare to families seeking economic security. Of 147 families served, 36 secured full-time employment, 3 secured part-time jobs, 7 parents with disabilities secured benefits, 1 enrolled in a four-year college, 45 enrolled in community college or vocational training, 25 obtained a childcare subsidy and found full-time childcare, and 5 parents started their own businesses. These services would not be available to our citizens without the important support of partnership with Bunkham County, and we thank you for your support. The highlights I share from our history are only a small part of the impactful ways the YWCA has served our community. On behalf of the YWCA Board of Directors, including our Board President, Lyndia Child, and Board Members, Nana Workman, Leslie Fay, and Dr. Bobby Stewart, we want to invite you all to join us to celebrate our 110th anniversary on May 11 at UNC Asheville from 6 to 8, Lipinski Auditorium at the Communities Welcome. And it'll be a big celebration of our archives, oral histories, and our accomplishments. And again, we thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have our public hearing for the rezoning request, key by Duke Energy and Debbie Trump will make the presentation.
Chairman, members of the board, Jason Walls on behalf of Duke Energy has applied to rezone 10 parcels totaling 23.59 acres from R3 Residential District to EMP Employment District. The parcels are located on the north side of New Rockwood Road between I-26 and Fisher's Mill Road and are vacant with the exception of three single-family homes along New Rockwood Road. The parcels are contiguous to the existing Duke Energy plant property. Access to parcels is largely through the existing power plant property. However, there is direct access to some of the parcels along New Rockwood Road, which is an NC DOT road, and Aberdeen Drive, a privately maintained street providing access to the Lake Julian Trails subdivision. The property to the immediate north of the subject parcels is the Duke Energy Power Plant, and that property is zoned EMP. Properties to the south, separated by New Rockwood Road, are comprised of single-family neighborhoods zoned R3 Residential. The Lake Julian Trails subdivision, which is located on the north side of New Rockwood Road, is zoned EMP and portions zoned R3. Properties to the east of the subject parcels, near the intersection of Fisher's Mill Road, are zoned R3 and contain a manufactured home park and some single-family homes. I-26 is to the west of the subject parcels. The applicant is seeking to rezone the properties in order to provide temporary employee parking and staging of construction materials during the conversion of the existing coal-fired power plant to a new gas-fired plant. The planning department recommends approval of the proposed rezonings as it is consistent with comprehensive land use plan. The 2013 update recommends that commercial and industrial development be within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors, within combined water and sewer service areas, outside of steep slope areas, outside of high elevations, outside of moderate and high-hazard slope stability areas, and outside female flood hazard areas. The subject properties are directly served by a major transportation corridor and are located in the combined water and sewer service area. Only one parcel contains a small area of slope that exceeds 25% and is identified as a moderate hazard slope stability area. The planning board held a public hearing on this application on April 3 of this year. The applicant discussed the need to locate the lay-down yard and parking next to the plant rather than in off-site locations and the environmental and economic benefits of the plant conversion. He also detailed plans to mitigate the impact on the community, including installation of buffers and landscaping and directing traffic away from the neighboring subdivisions. One person spoke during public comment. She stated she was in favor of the conversion to cleaner energy but was concerned that there be an adequate buffer provided. The planning board found that the proposed MAP amendments is consistent with the land use plan as it is readily accessed by transportation corridor and can be served by public water and sewer. The board further found that the rezoning is reasonable and in public interest as it is compatible with the adjacent industrial development and is adjacent to the EMP zoning district and recommended approval in a vote of seven to zero. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me at this time.
Are there any initial questions from the commission? I don't see any initial questions, so why don't we open the public hearing and see if there's any public comment. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:46. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment during public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Henrietta Dillingham, and I.
Come on, come on, please.
Okay. I don't like microphones. I'm Henrietta Dillingham, and I'm a property owner in Lake Julian Trails. I did not get to the previous meeting. I've just had some questions, though. Were there trees that were going to be cut?
And you can ask the questions, and then we can come back and sort of get the answer, okay?
Were there trees that were going to be cut? We don't really want any more trees cut in our area. I know we have discussed with Duke Energy before the berms they're going to build and that sort of thing. But we are concerned, I guess, because it's going to really increase the amount of traffic that's coming into that area. And that's. the amount of traffic that's coming into that area, and that road is probably not going to sustain the walk more. But I understand why they want to have this done, but I'd just like a couple of answers.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Newman, Commissioners, Dr. Green, thanks for considering this request. I'm Jason Walls, District Manager with Duke Energy, and thank you for considering this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But before we do, if I just may kind of put kind of the project in context, if you will, very briefly, that this is another step in the process of retiring a coal plant and converting that site to natural gas and really being able to fully leverage that site and being able to actually move construction traffic. Mrs. Dillingham, we've talked several times, and we've listened to that community, and we understand their concerns around visual mitigation, traffic, and other things, and we've already made some adjustments to help accommodate some of those concerns. One of the adjustments we've made, although Ms. Trumpy recognized that there's currently some street cuts into the subject properties we're asking to be rezoned, we are not going to use those and actually going to close those properties off. We're going to direct employees to use a...so this is where that map is weird. It is a northeasterly exit before Lake Julian Trail, the entrance of Lake Julian Trails is the main entrance into the power plant. Also, these properties allow us to cut an internal road where all construction movement will happen on plant property, and we will not have to use the state road and further kind of degrade or be a nuisance to our neighbors. And so we're trying to be very thoughtful, mindful, and we've had a lot of conversations with neighbors on ways to help address some of their concerns, and we will continue to do that. One other item we're doing is behind Lake Julian Trails, we're actually building a berm and a decorative wall with landscaping on the apartment side of that plant. You know, as part of our efforts to remove coal ash, we actually had to take down trees behind those residential units, and so we're trying to add back some pleasing aesthetic kind of visual mitigation. And so we're trying to be thoughtful and mindful and work directly with the neighbors to help address a lot of their concerns. I'm happy to answer your question.
Great, great, thank you. Well, if there's any questions, we can come back to you, Jason. Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Fisher. I live in the Hunter's Trace neighborhood, which is across from the three homes that were vacated. I guess Duke Energy had purchased them, and I guess my question is, and I think you kind of answered it, they're not planning on going into that area. They're planning on going where the entrance is, further from Lake Julian Trails towards Glenbridge. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. Chair. Yes. Yeah.
Sorry. So what is going to happen to that property with the vacated homes? Are you going to tear down those trees? Is there going to be a road put in there?
So can I make a suggestion, ma'am? Why don't you list all the questions, and then we'll ask Jason to come up and respond, or other people from his department will respond.
Okay. So those are the questions I have. What are they going to do with that property of the homes that they vacated that they purchased? Is there going to be a road built into that area where those homes were vacated? Are they going to leave the trees? Is the structure of that area going to pretty much stay the same? Or what are they going to do with that area that they purchased those homes? That's what my question is.
Thank you. Let's see if there's any other questions, and then if someone from Duke would like to respond, we'll allow that. Any other comments from anybody else who hasn't commented? Okay. What I'd like to do is close the public hearing, but then I think we'd like to hear from Duke, any additional thoughts on some of the questions that have come up during the hearing. So I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:52 PM, and I'll invite Mr. Walls or anyone else to share any additional thoughts based on questions that were asked during the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, you're stuck with me, I'm sorry. But so to answer several of the questions, and if I miss one, let me know. So the homes that were purchased, we will be tearing those homes down. Some of the homes are in disrepair. We just actually last Thursday, I think it was last Thursday, or last week, we received the final permits, the erosion settlement control permits needed to actually tear those homes down, and so that's going to be happening in very due course, and we'll be cleaning up those properties because those vacant buildings have really fallen into disrepair and have been a substantial eyesore to our neighbors across the road and the streets. And so we are fixing that very quickly. We will be clearing some of the trees on those parcels there to turn that property into a lay-down yard. What that will allow us to do is if I had an aerial map, it will allow us to actually put the road on the inside of the power plant. So once employees get to work, they'll park their cars, but all of the large equipment, the cranes, the machinery, that type, those will actually be able to travel on plant property without having to go on the roadway to eliminate traffic. The road, the entrance road, will actually be closer to Fisher's Mill Road. It'll be in between Fisher's Mill Road and the Lake Julian Trails neighborhood. On that entrance road, we'll be building a 700-foot decorative wall to help provide some visual mitigation to the neighbors of Lake Julian Trails. And I also want to reinforce that we know that this is a temporary use. The company has no plans after we build the plant for this property. And so we have committed to the neighbor, both the Hunter's Trace community as well as Lake Julian Trails, to have very open dialogue about what they would like to see as we finish the plant and leave that area. And while those conversations are ongoing, that is still our commitment to work with the neighborhoods on ways that we can leave that property as a benefit to those communities that, quite frankly, we will have an impact on during construction.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners at this time? Thank you. All right. Commissioners, questions or motion?
Motion to approve.
And Ms. Trumpy, do we need two motions for this rezoning?
It's pleased if you would have one motion and vote on consistency with the land use plan, and then a separate one for approval or denial.
Okay, this is for consistency with the plan?
This motion is in consistency with the plan.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove. The rezoning.
So move.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all. Next on the agenda is three initial budget presentations. The first will be from the Asheville City Schools. And before we start these three, I would also reiterate that on Tuesday, May 2nd, I'm sorry, Tuesday, May 16th at noon, the county commission will hold a budget retreat here at 200 College Street. We'll be spending that whole afternoon talking about the county's budget in more detail. But we're going to start off this evening with a presentation from the Asheville City School District, and Dr. Bobby Shore will make the presentation. Thank you for being with us, Dr. Shore.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Green, thank you for the privilege to share with you Asheville City Schools' budget. Tonight, we actually would like to tell you what we need, why we need it, and how much Asheville City Schools' budget challenges, actually why we need. A quick look at the factors that are influencing our budget request tonight. One is the citywide demographics. The second is increased student enrollment, the classic K3 class size reduction issue, state mandated increases, and Phase 2 of local salary supplements. Actually, we are driven by increased, the privilege and the honor of having increased enrollment. As you can see, the population in the city of Asheville is increasing 1.5% annually, since 2002, actually. Also looking at increased enrollment trends from our school age population, again, this is city of Asheville demographics, you can see that over the next five years, we will gain 2,000 students. Especially if you look from 2016 to 2021, we'll have 305 0-4-years-of-age children, an increase of 165 to 9-year-olds, 239 increase in 10-14-year-olds, and a 261 increase in Our increased enrollment trends in Asheville City Schools, over the past six years, we have grown 20%. And according to the Department of Public Instruction demographics, we are one of 19 systems out of 115 that is projected to show significant growth over the next five years. And here's a graphic of our enrollment, actually, over the past five years, and today we have 4,550 students enrolled in Asheville City Schools. That's a reflection of our 20% growth. I'd like to focus for just a moment on Asheville Middle. Thank you for the beautiful new facility, and it is so true that if we build it, they will come. We found that true this school year. We increased by 100 students at Asheville Middle School this school year from last year. If you will look at the totals at the bottom on the slide, from 1516, we have 699. We're at 799 today. Another way to look at our increased enrollment at Asheville Middle School, if you look at 798, 799, the students we have today in that building, when our third, our third, fourth, and fifth graders get to the middle school in 2019, '20, we will have an increased enrollment just by kids in our pipeline today of 320 students. The projected population of Asheville Middle will be 1,117. As you will recall, that building capacity is around 900. Also, the other challenge that we're looking at is K3 classroom size reduction, and that is having a direct impact on all school districts throughout the state. Actually, we refer to it as HB13. It is now signed into law, session law 2017-9. It allows us the opportunity to phase in those classroom reduction requirements, and I'm going to share those with you in just a moment. And it also requires the superintendents of the school district to report directly to the State Department of Public Instruction twice a year to verify the class sizes in K3. Next school year, we will have the opportunity to have 20 students enrolled, or a class, in K through 3. This year, we had 21 students, and we always have the flexibility of going up three in a classroom. So the max this year was 24. The max next year will be 23, as long as we do not exceed the district's average of 20 students per classroom. So in some classrooms, we could go up as long as we have lower enrollment in other classrooms to maintain that 20 per classroom, per district. Another way to look at the classroom size reduction is again looking at next year, the HB13, our projections for next school year, adhering to the 20 per classroom. We, and in fact, we worked on these numbers today, and they worked out exactly as we had thought they would. We will need five new teachers to begin to work on this classroom reduction size, and also we project two new teacher assistants. If you will look at the next box, that is the requirement for 2018, '19, and in kindergarten, year after next, we will be allowed 18 students. In first grade, we will be allowed 16 students. And in second and third grades, we will be allowed 17 students. And you can always add three for the max, as long as district-wide, we don't go up with those numbers. So we projected, and we had to do that this year, we would have needed 13 new teachers. However, we, with the five new ones that we are asking for this year, we will cut that down to eight year after next. I think the next slide will give you a good idea visually of how this looks in terms of classrooms. This year, just take any school, let's take Claxton, for instance. We have four first-grade classes at Claxton with 21 children in a classroom. According to the new legislation in 2018, '19, that will translate into five classrooms, just for first grade now, with four kids left over. Well, kids don't come in nice packages of 16, 16, 16, so you're always going to have some leftover, a remainder, which we think we will have to look at combination classes to satisfy some of those requirements. So that's just an impact at one grade level at one school. If you multiply that by five schools, and the impact at grades K1, 2, 3, then you can see the magnitude of the issue that all school districts are facing. Our action plan, our responses to the increased enrollment and to the classroom size reduction. I guess the thing that we are most grateful for in Asheville City Schools is that we do have some extra facilities that can be used. In most school districts, they do not have the space. We have the wonderful Montford Building, and we also have a preschool building that has space. So in answer to especially the middle school enrollment, we are looking next year for the Montford Campus to be the Montford North Star Academy, and it will house only sixth graders. And we are anticipating about 100 students there, and we have future growth plans for a seventh and an eighth grade class. But if need be, as we look at the demographics, it could become a 5-6 school. That's still a possibility with that facility. We are looking at sharing resources with Asheville Middle School in order to help fund, to pay for this sixth-grade class at the Montford Campus. The second building that we have some space in is Asheville Primary. Next year, we are actually looking forward to still serving our preschool program there, but on the other side of the hall, we would like to serve preschool through seventh grade, again, to help with the enrollment issue and the classroom reduction size issue. We, in the future, would like to expand to grades 3, and then continue to add grades 4 and 5 as our enrollment increases and as we see the need. The Asheville Primary will feature mixed-age classes because it will be based on a Montessori thing. We will have four classes on what I call the other side of the building, outside of the preschool, and that will be two preschool kindergarten classes and two first and second grade classes, again, getting at the classroom size reduction. And using our facilities, the rooms that we are using for the K through 2 classrooms cannot be used for preschool because of the limitations. cannot be used for preschool because of the limitations and the requirements. We do pride ourselves on our preschool program. And we will continue that preschool program and in fact cultivate it and grow it. Next year, Asheville City Schools will have seven preschool classes in the preschool building. 18 children each. We will also have three of the Werner preschool classrooms. And those are really early head start partners. And we provide the space and manage that. In all, we will have 10 preschool classes at the primary site, including the Werner three. And also, we will have three Asheville City Schools preschools at Jones, Paul Fletcher, and Dixon, which are there this year. In all, when we look at the preschool program, our goal is to have a preschool in all of our elementary schools. We do not get any state funds for preschools. But you can see some of the funding sources there that we do draw from. In Asheville City Schools, next year, we will serve 180 preschoolers. That will be our largest number ever for three and four-year-olds. And again, we want to continue to grow that program. What we need to meet our challenges, our funding priorities. These are just some of the highlights of the ways we intend to spend our money to look at meeting the challenges of increased enrollment and also decreasing class size at the same time, which is really a double-edged sword for us. We will expand and focus heavily on the Asheville Primary Campus. And you can see some of our needs there. We will also be looking at the Montford Campus for resources. But mainly, the Montford Campus will be funded from existing resources at the Asheville Middle School. And other priority findings include, if we can swing it, another assistant principal at Asheville Middle School. That wonderful building has those three levels with sixth grade on the top and a seventh and eighth. And we need really an administrator on each floor to help manage our students and make sure that we are safe. Then in the class size reduction, I've already alluded to the fact that we would like to look at five new teachers this year to begin to reduce classroom size. So it will not be such a whammy for us year after next. And then other resources that we would look at would include day treatment assistance. I have been out of the school business for three years now. And I will tell you that I have been amazed this year, as I came back, at the needs of our children in terms of mental health facilities and just help for those children. So we have begun a day treatment program at each of our levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And we would like to grow those. Also, we're looking at our state mandated increases. The salary increases that we think will come. 5% for certified and 3% for non-certified. And then the benefit cost increases, the retirement rate, and the insurance will be going up. Our local increases, we are hopeful that we can implement phase two of the local salary supplement. And we have given you some of those estimates for us. Last year, with the local salary supplement, we did address the living wage issue. And we also increased the last step of the local salary supplement for those employees who had 20 years or more experience. I guess now we're to the bottom line, our ask, and it's pretty simple. We are asking for a 5% increase over last year. We would be hopeful that we might be able to have the local salary supplement. And then for us, a very separate funding issue is the Asheville District Supplemental Tax, which I call the school tax. We now are funded at 15 cents. We would ask that we be funded at 13 cents. And we would like the 15, but we would be so grateful, but we're hopeful we'll get 13 cents. And then we will be looking at the Asheville City Schools' fund balance because we are opening two new campuses. And we are going to have to use some of our own funding to do that. But we are healthy enough that we think we can do that. We want to thank you for always being supportive of the school systems. We couldn't ask for better county commissioners nor for more support. And we know that you have everyone to look out for. And we just appreciate being part of the everyone. And we know that you will fund us as generously as you can. And we will look forward to that. I have been the superintendent of Asheville City Schools for 30 days now. So if you have any really hard questions, I'm not sure that I will have the answers. But I do have the Asheville City Schools' leadership team with me back here. We thought all of you would wait. And our board chair, and those are the experts back there. So we will be happy to entertain any questions that you have. And if you don't have any, we'll be very happy about that also.
I have just a couple. Thank you. It's great to see you and thanks for being willing to serve us. Can you explain more about what the day treatment means? What that entails?
Yes, we have, actually, we fund locally a teacher at the elementary level. And then we are partnering with a mental health agency who actually, I believe, draws down Medicaid from our students. And we have begun a program at the elementary level. Had one, well, actually, two classrooms on the preschool site. And we have just sent those children back to their home schools with some push-in supports at the school level. We have a class at the middle school, which has been phenomenal in terms of helping those children cope and get back into the classrooms and know how to de-escalate themselves in the classrooms. And also, we have a classroom at the high school in which we have counselor support and sessions with those students.
And then I know at one point, Hill Street, thanks for all the pre-K, that's awesome. I know at one point, Hill Street was talking about working with the city for another pre-K. Is that coming along?
Right now, we have been told that they already have two site licenses and they're not supposed to have more than two. Although I guess the latest word, and Mandy can help me with this, is that maybe that could be gotten around. So, and also, our consultant told us that that facility was not appropriate for the preschool. But we have our preschool expert here, who is the principal of Asheville Primary. But she's also our preschool director. So she might be able to give you a little more information than just the surface information.
And your preschool formula, is it's all levels of economic background?
Yes, it is.
Everybody's together?
Everybody is together, absolutely.
I have a, I have a comment and a question, maybe for Dr. Green in light of HB 13. I understand that what you are thinking is that you might want to try to get a jump on next year. But my understanding is that this year has been bumped out. There's no mandated.
The government's trying to pull next year.
So as far as, as far as the budget, when we look at that, wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily have to be done. But I understand, you know, your concept on wanting to maybe make a jump on it. Other than, are we sure that, are we sure that next year, that that mandate will be? Will we know it to be that?
I don't think I would have an answer for that. It's harder.
Christopher, I'm going to show.
It's, it's a yes.
But this year, it has been.
I will tell you that we are going from 21 in a classroom this year down to 20 next year. So there is some decrease already taking place.
Is that on your own decision or is that?
That's according to HB 13, to the new law. So they have reduced the class size. They only reduced it by one. The following year, they've reduced it down to 17, 18, 16, 17, 17. A big jump.
If you're, but as long as your average does not exceed the.
The magic number, whatever that is at the grade level. Yeah, you can, you can pack some kids more in some classes. But somewhere you have to offset it so the average is whatever class size they ask you to do. And if you do not do that, the school district could lose funding from the state.
Yeah, we really wasn't sure of the impact until the final bill comes. But you know, that's with any, any bills that we have to work through. But thank you for a clear explanation on how y'all are planning on working.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you for being supportive again. It's always an honor and a pleasure to share with you. Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. If the class size reductions do go forward as currently contemplated over the next couple of years, it's going to be different in different circumstances. But at a high level, are the school districts planning to? And there's all these additional costs that come along from doing that, right? You need more teachers, you need more classroom space.
You need more materials.
Nobody's going to argue.
Furniture, everything. You have to do a new complete class.
Are there, is there an assumption that if you have smaller class sizes, you have overall fewer teacher assistants because of the smaller class sizes? And that's one of the other kind of variables that would factor into how this would all now? If it does go down the path that's being talked about right now?
I believe that will be a trading chip. Because I think the reasoning, I really don't know the reasoning at the general assembly. But I would think the reasoning is that if you have fewer children in a classroom, you wouldn't need as many adults. So right now, we have assistance funded for kindergarten through second grade. And at the second grade level, the principal can decide how they would like to use that assistant. But in the future, we may decide to fund kindergarten through first grade. Or to, to have savings.
Okay. The other question, we went to the North Star facility on Lambert Avenue. So what's known now is that there'll be a sixth grade opened in that building. And that'll start this fall?
Uh huh. This coming, this coming year, we have 87 students already enrolled. And we think about 100 will be the max.
That's great.
Okay. And how long will you be taking? What's the timeframe for folks who are interested in that to apply?
Until we reach 100.
Okay. All right. So through the spring, summer, folks who are interested in that? Are you still kind of promoting it as a new school?
We are, we are. And actually, we were hopeful that we would have 50 students. And we have really been amazed at the interest in a small setting. We normally lost children at the middle school age level. They would come to us through elementary. They would depart, go to charter schools at the middle school level, and they came back to the high school. But this year, and I believe thanks to that gorgeous new building and other initiatives. But that is such a big drawing card. We didn't lose students to other businesses.
Well, that's great. And so sixth grade will start the fall. And then a decision will be made to build it out as a sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Basically, smaller middle school.
Right.
Or there might be a chance it's more like an intermediate school of 5, 6. But the, the, the primary scenario is that it's going to be a smaller middle school in the system.
With a STEM, a STEM school?
It is. It's a STEM school. Yes.
Terrific. Any other questions?
I have an observation. Oh, you go.
Just a quick follow-up on Bronny's question. So as we start the new school year, this, later this summer, you'd anticipate 100 students at North Star and around about 800 at Asheville Middle? Based on current numbers, about 900 to 1000 in school settings?
Yes. We may, we may lose a few at the middle school going to a smaller school setting. But actually, we've been very surprised at the enrollment numbers staying pretty consistent at the middle school, but with an increase. I think the increase we're seeing would be those students who would have left.
I have a question and an observation. It's good to see all of you again. And I will say that I mentor once a week, I'm in the middle school. And I agree with you, since I rotated off the school board four years ago, it's unreal how it's changed and the challenges that they have. And I see weekly what, you know, you're up against. But the staff there is doing an excellent job. But the question I have might not relate to the budget. But since you're here, I'm curious, do you still have SROs in the elementary schools?
Yes, and we're requesting another SRO. I don't know if you noticed up on the screen. We have one that is shared among all the elementary schools. We have one at the middle school and we have two at the high school. So we're requesting an additional SRO to help cover Montford and the primary school and also help with the other elementary schools. We would divide those campuses between the two SROs.
You know, the question I have, I can understand the need of SROs at the middle school and at the high school. But I hope we aren't sending the wrong signal to young people in elementary schools. Because sometimes, and I've heard this from SRO officers, they feel that they're used more for discipline when they shouldn't be. And with the young kids, that's sending a message that concerns me because they come up fearing police officers rather than there are people who can help them.
Yes.
And that's why I question that, if we could better use them in the neighborhoods, you know, policing. Or you call them when they need it, but they have them in elementary schools on a daily basis. That's just my.
I, I agree with you in that we don't want to use SROs for discipline at the elementary schools. What our goal is to have the SROs visible, know the kids, let the kids know them, know that they are a friend, an asset, an ally, and not someone to come do whatever to them.
Good.
Have, have other schools, especially in elementary schools, adopted more mental health specialists in those young years?
Yes, we do. That's part of the day treatment program. We have an onsite therapist there that works with students in each of the elementary schools, in each of the schools.
So have you contemplated instead of the SRO, the elementary school additional mental health needs?
I'm sorry, Ellen didn't.
Instead of having an SRO in the elementary school, more mental health specialists in addition to that, more, increasing that number that you have now, instead of the SRO?
Are you asking, is that a trade-off?
Mm-hmm. Well, no. Instead, keeping everything as you have now, but instead of an SRO, mental health specialist additional, if that's where the need is.
I would have to turn to the staff. Actually, we'd have to.
It's just a theoretical question.
Right.
So along that, along that line of discussion, I was in a meeting this morning with the Irwin District Principals at Irwin High School. And to, just to, in, to, let's see, 13, 14 budget, Dr. Green. I think we had approved 1.2 million for additional SROs in Buncombe County. I remember the number. And it was for the, for the elementary schools, going to elementary schools. I can tell you, some of the, it's different at different schools.
It is.
Because it's different in Irwin and Pisgah. But the ones that I have seen have been just friends to the children. They go in, they're reading to the kids. They are trying to minimize the, you know, that.
Fear.
Whether if there's, if there's fear, you know, and I mean, one blue light's behind me, I get a little, you know. But you know, it's just a part of the uniform. But we approve that to, so that the, the young kids would have someone that would make them feel more safe and someone they could actually go to. So I think building on their relationship is a good thing to do as well as some of the other needs that you might have within school. They were talking about, you know, mental health needs. But they were also talking about where the SROs were being used. But some were spread a little thin. And they would like, as you've requested, maybe, maybe another. So I think in, in general, the relationship between the SRO and the school is really good. That they're, both the principals as well as the SROs are doing a fantastic job, from what I, from what I hear. That they're, both the principals as well as the SROs are doing a fantastic job, from what I hear.
All right, Dr. Swart, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for being with us from the city's full district. Thanks for your work. Is Ashtral, Buncombe, or Bunkham? Dr. King, thank you for being with us. It's good to see you as always.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in and present to you our budget request for this year. The way we're going to proceed is in three steps. I'm going to give you a very brief overview of who we are at the college, what we're doing. Because I think there are some numbers there that you may be interested in. Then we are going to move into the budget request. And after that, I'm going to have an in-depth explanation of our capital improvement projects, which we're asking you to fund this year. And that will be done by Dr. Dirk Wilnoff, who's sitting over here to my left. He is my right. He is our CFO at the college.
Can we get that a little closer to the mic back here?
The college was funded, was founded, of course, in nineteen fifty-nine. We are approved by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, the Commission on Colleges. This is the approving, accrediting body for the southeastern part of the United States. It's vitally important that we're accredited. And we are, in fact, through two thousand twenty-four. Presently, we have fifty-nine academic programs, seventeen diplomas, and fifty-five certificates. Now, some of those certificates are taken from a diploma or a two-year degree, a diploma being a one-year activity. The important thing in that number, fifty-nine, is that fifty-four of those programs are all in workforce development areas. They are the kinds of things that lead directly to work, directly to jobs in Buncombe County. And as a matter of fact, we pay attention to that on a regular basis because if we are running a program which does not lead to jobs, then we cancel it. Because we want the students who go into those programs to know that they can get an academic degree, which will also lead them to a job. Only three of our programs, and they're very popular, but only three of our programs lead to university transfer. That's the Associate in Arts, the Associate in Science, and the Associate in Engineering degrees. All of those transfer through an articulation agreement that we've worked out with the university system into the four-year institutions. And the articulation agreement is so smooth now that the student is guaranteed when finishing his transfer degree with us to be able to take all of those credits into the university and be in junior status there at the university. Continuing education, of course, you know about. The thing in there that we're probably the most proud of is basic adult education and high school equivalency. We take people who have no training whatsoever. In fact, people who are, cannot speak English, and we bring them up to a level where they can take classes at the college level itself. That's adult basic education. We have a number of proposed new programs, which I think we have mentioned before, but it's worth taking to look at them. I have a home for the Interventional Cardiovascular Technology Program. We will be beginning that one in January of this year on the fourth floor of the new Allied Health Building. The rest of the programs on there are all in the investigatory stage. We're looking to see if we can get some of them started. Mr. Friar, you'll be interested, the Avionics and Aviation Maintenance, are two programs that you suggested to us. And they appear to be viable. And so we're taking a real hard look at getting those two programs going. The enrollment this year was very healthy. Nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one students in curriculum classes. Those are the ones seeking college degrees and diplomas. Now, the reason why that number is as large as it is is because students don't necessarily go semester after semester in a neat model as we used to in the sixties and seventies. Instead, many of our students drop out for a semester. We call them stopouts. But they are still seeking a degree. So when you put the students who were with us in the fall, and that's about seven thousand five hundred, and the students who are with us in the spring, that's about a little over seven thousand. And you have the dropouts, those who stopped out for the semester. Our total number in the two large semesters of the year is nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one students. Continuing education, the various activities there, thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-nine students, for a total of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-three people taking some sort of activity at AB Tech during the year that we're about ready to complete. And then a number that I'm real proud of, I want to share with you here. By the way, the slide was updated about four o'clock this afternoon, so that number is no longer accurate. We, degrees and diplomas that we will be awarding in, on the thirteenth of May. Degrees and diplomas will be ten, one thousand and ten. We also will be awarding two hundred and ninety-five certificates. Again, a small group of courses, about four to five in a field that gets the person ready to go out and get a job real quickly. Two hundred and ninety-five certificates for a total of one thousand three hundred and five, one thousand three hundred and five degrees, diplomas, and certificates that we will be awarding this semester. The total enrollment at AB Tech, anybody who's ever touched any course with us since nineteen fifty-nine is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand people. And over ninety percent of that number are Buncombe County residents. Well over ninety percent of that number. Employees right now, two hundred and forty-nine full-time staff, a hundred and seventy-eight full-time faculty, and then part-time staff of a hundred and fourteen, and four hundred and seventy-three part-time faculty members. For a total of a little over a thousand people who work in some fashion at AB Tech. And now our budget request. We are asking this year for seven million, eight hundred thousand dollars from you. That is an increase over the previous year, and we'll talk about that in a moment. In addition, we are putting into that an anticipated fund balance of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So the operating revenue of the year is going to be, we're proposing, is eight million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, nine seventy-nine. The expenditures will be exactly the same with our operating budget of seven million, one twenty-six, nine seventy-nine. And a capital improvement plan, which again, you're going to hear about very shortly, of one point five million, adding up to the total that we are asking for. The increase is principally two things. First of all, last year, we did not ask you for a salary increase for our employees. However, our county employees, our county employees. However, the state gave a increase to our state employees. And as a consequence, we had to give that same increase out of the county budget to the county employees. That's about fifty people. That, that means that the number that we're asking for this year goes up by the raise that was given last year. In addition, the governor's budget right now is proposing a two percent raise and a five hundred dollar bonus. That's the only thing we've heard from the General Assembly. And so we have built that into the number there. So part of the increase we're asking for is that raise we gave last year, and we've got to give again this year, and the raise that we're anticipating the General Assembly giving to state employees. In addition, the, the major capital projects add up to, for this year, one point five million dollars. And I'm going to ask Dirk to explain those to you. I think we have a slide on the front.
Just like you, one thing that we've noticed has been at AB Tech for the last year or so is that we have an aging physical plant. And one of the things that the leadership of the college was able to address a couple of years ago was a full facilities assessment, condition assessment. And so in two thousand fifteen, they did a capital improvement plan, a two-year plan to address, to address the shortcomings, deferred maintenance at the institution. And this was to be updated annually. However, it wasn't really funded except through the reserves that the college has had on hand over the last couple of years. We have now revised that for this year. And this document, I don't have a copy for you, a full copy today, but I will send this to each of you so you'll be aware of the condition assessment as well as our prioritization of the deficiencies that need to be addressed over the next ten years. And we did include that three-page spreadsheet in your budget package from us. So if you want us to get a rush, look at that. You can go in and see what we've done to prioritize those needs over the next ten years. Those assessments address things such as roofs, HVAC controls, health and safety, life safety, sustainability, energy efficiency. And then also, we have put in building longevity concerns, most notably the fact that while we have a beautiful campus with these fluted bricks, the reality is, is that they are very porous material, and they need to be routinely cleaned and sealed. And so we built it into the budget, a routine plan for doing that, starting next year. Was, starting with Simpson, and then Elm, which is another issue of building that needs to be addressed fairly quickly. And then we would proceed with this plan over the next ten years, asking for your support, as well as identifying other sources of support, as we have done already. If you look at the spreadsheet that is in your packet, you'll see that a great many of the deficiencies that we cited two years ago have been addressed with connect NC bond funds. And so that's given us a head start. But moving forward, we can't continue to ignore the deferred maintenance that's there. And we want to make the investments in repair and replacements that need to be made moving forward. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time?
Yeah, I do have one, so. I've looked at this, but it's really hard to read, a lot of the small stuff. But as far as the maintenance, when did you say the maintenance program was adopted?
The assessment was done in two thousand fifteen, and it identified a ten-year plan that was to be moved forward every year.
Okay.
It's been revised this year. There were some projects that were accomplished last year and this year. But moving forward, there's a consistent and forward-looking plan that will address those items in priority order.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So we're going to get that plan?
Yes, I'll send that to you.
What that has is the document that you've already received, column by column, the explanation of, for example, the one point five million we're asking for this year, but then the rest of the next ten years. But in there is also a, an explanation of each building that we own and the condition of that building.
Could you translate, once again, just that end of useful lifecycle term? We've got on the top of the plans.
Well, yes. Well, obviously, a lot of the buildings that we have, the older inventory, some of those buildings are thirty, forty years old. And so usually, when you capitalize a building, you show appreciation over its useful life, which typically for a building would be fifty years. Some of the HVAC equipment or roofs, it could be twenty years or whatever. So that is addressing the fact that we have a lot of our assets that are now nearing the end of their useful life, and need to be replaced.
Roofs are probably the best example there.
So when, so when you say that, it's not that this particular building is near the end of its cycle, it's that the roof on the Bayberry Building is at the end of its cycle.
Yes, okay.
And that the flooring, you know, the early college at Birch is at the end of its cycle. So you've got to have a plan to replace that, which helps maintain that big building. So, yeah, so that's a good, all right, thanks.
You were gracious enough to take Commissioner Whiteside and I and trustee. She's still here. And, you know, I've been back and forth at AB Tech for various things. But I was really horrified at the state of some of those buildings. And it was almost like two different worlds. You know, the beautiful Allied Health Building, and then two blocks over, the leaking, the smell. We did say it had a good air quality report. So it would be easy to point fingers and say, you know, how this got to be the state it's at. But I think for the public, and for us, and our tax dollars, we really need a concrete plan of going forward so we don't have a bright new building and then one falling apart not too far away. And also, so I hope we can get that. Also, I think at the time, we asked for a list of the most popular classes, the ones that were, people were achieving the most success in, to get that. Also, I think we had asked quite a while ago, the racial breakdown of the faculty and also the applicants as far as diversity. And then also, I think somebody said when we were there, the incubator brewery at Inca, the utilities on that were greater than at a campus? Is that right?
The building is quite large out there at Inca, and it's certainly not efficient. But by no means is it drawing down more than the campus itself.
Is it possible to get those numbers? What do you, Ellen, do you know?
I don't have any question right now, but I appreciate the presentation. And I, you know, I do think that I'm glad we're spending time talking about the maintenance needs because it's not the, you know, always the glamorous new, new projects. But it's, it's an important responsibility to make sure we take care of these facilities long-term. So I'm glad we have this. And as with all the different budget items, of course, we're going to have difficult decisions to make about prioritization of that. But we do need to take care of these buildings and make sure we get the full value we can get out of them. So I think this is a really important discussion, and I'm glad we're getting this presentation this evening and the plan for what that would look like for this year and years ahead. So thank you very much.
Can we get the other information too, as far as the, the most successful programs, the graduation rates, and most attended, and also the diversity breakdown of faculty and the application?
You can do the second part of that tomorrow. I can't do the most popular program, I think, in a day, but we can get it to.
That'd be great.
I would like, one other comment. I would like to say that this capital improvement plan that you've given us and the way that you have spread this out is very clear on each of these buildings as to what the needs are and replacing. And it, it looks like it's, it's very well thought out. And, and I appreciate it's very easy, very easy to look at this and determine what you're going to be doing to these buildings and when, and to see that each of them, you know, have some work that needs to be done, that you're, you're going to be taking care of that. I think that, you know, when we look at the buildings, the flooded buildings, you know, there's a lot of buildings like that around. Isn't the BBNT building like that that they're redone? It looks a lot like it, but anyhow, anyhow. He says it's not, it's not. I don't examine that, I don't examine that close to be able to find out. But it's the work. There you go. Well, I told you. Well, I told you. But I think that, you know, to maybe part of Commissioner Frost and some others, you know, maybe they comment and go out and see and something. And I think any buildings need, there are times when you can catch them on a good day or a good month or a good year, and they need work. And so I think, you know, for me, you know, I just want to know, you know, how you're taking care of that. And I'm not going to get into the weeds on it, you know, it's just to be able to know that those other great buildings out there, we know that the way they're made, I'll give a, you know, shout out to John and Dr. Green on that, on the way those buildings are done, you're not constructed, you're not going to have the same issues. And you're not even, we're not even going to have this discussion, well, I don't have this discussion because I'm not going, you know, hoping around that I'm not going to be in this seat down there, you know, many, many years down the road. But, so I think those precautions have been taken on the new buildings, it's the old buildings that we're concerned about. And if there's not a good capital plan or a good maintenance plan, you know, then it does, it does, you know, make us concerned. But it would be very easy for you to give us that. And then that concern could be, could probably pretty easily removed, I think. So as long as it's a good plan like this, so the capital plan, I'd just give you kudos for that, so.
Yeah, I want to commend you too. I think it's a good preventative maintenance plan. Unfortunately, we haven't had that all along. But going forward, I agree, Joe, that should eliminate a lot of the problems that you have today. Because it's obvious with some of those buildings I went into, it wasn't much of a plan before.
Say, quick comment and question. I don't want to not pause for a second about those 1,300, more than 1,300 folks who are getting recent certificates. That's great news. Thank you for sharing that and congratulations to all of those students. Yeah. I did have a quick question, just, well, we're looking at this document and thanks for the clear presentation of it. I note that Elm doesn't show up very often and just wondered if that was reflective of the current sort of prognosis for Elm?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Yeah.
And if Elm remains with us, then we will have to reassess the work that needs to be done.
Okay. But this sort of, is Elm kind of, okay, that's indicative of the DNR status for Elm?
Okay, DNR.
Okay, thank you.
It was, it was helpful too. I think for some of us, when we saw something like $6 million in a budget called maintenance, I was in the impression it was for maintenance. And Dirk was very kind and explained how that's broken down, so, because it gave the impression of maintenance being performed, but it's not that at all. So, thank you.
The budget covers the electricity, things like that.
Well, salaries and, yeah, salaries was a good portion of that, yeah.
Our budget covers both of our, our maintenance people and our police force. A couple of years ago, we went from having a security guard force that was not armed to a sworn deputized police force. And that cost the county a lot of money. But with the kinds of things that have happened at, on college campuses, it was the only prudent measure. And so right now, we have a sworn police force. You will see two different kinds of automobiles in our police force. One for security guards who are on duty after hours in the evening, but the police force that's there during the day, taking, making sure that the campus is safe.
Do me a favor, when you're looking at maintenance, paint the sign at INCA for me.
I'm sorry?
Paint the sign at INCA for me.
Sure, sure. I think we're going to put some do's.
I said I'm not going to get into weeds, I just got into weeds there.
Yeah, literally.
All right. Any other questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Beeman.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present the 2018 budget to us. As you know, we have many departments and locations where citizens can access our service. So I want to start the presentation by sharing a video of some of those locations. So there's some that people will never really see without this. So in calculating a revenue neutral rate, we would, we would take a look at what our year would be like without a reappraisal. So it'd be what were our revenues last year, what was growth, because the statute's very clear about keeping growth. And then we use this, this new tax base that comes from the reappraisal to generate the tax rate that we would, we would need to have that much money come into our budget, that 17 plus growth. And that tax rate would be 51.3 cents. In our appeal logs, we've used $340 million. And we will have a further discussion about that on the 16th so that we know how the process worked, how we reached that number. So our own rate is 60.4, revenue neutral is 51.3, and we have used 55.9 to develop this budget. A penny is now worth $3.6 million. So funding cuts at this point is a pretty, is a big leap to get to a penny. If we talk about our revenues for a few minutes, property tax, 70 dollars, is by far, is our primary revenue. And by legislative design, it's the source that we have the most control over. We also receive sales tax revenue. And that is authorized by the General Assembly with some restrictions and distribution of sales tax can be changed with the legislature at any time. And then we have intergovernmental revenue that we'll also talk about as we go through this process. Some people like to see a pie chart, and some people like to see a chart. Property tax represents 62.7% of our revenue stream. Let's talk for a minute about sales tax. Sales tax in Bucan County is 7%, 7 cents and a dollar. That's collected by our vendors and sent to the North Carolina Department of Revenue. They keep 4.75 cents of that, they send two and a quarter cents back to the community. And as it comes back into the community, we have to distribute it several different ways. Sorry, that's red dot. There we go. The first half sip, half penny goes to the school capital commission for K-12, bricks and mortar. A quarter of a penny is Article 46, and we have used that for education, but it's used it as defined in the resolution by the commissioners. So that leaves a penny and a half that we move on through here and distribute to K-12 for, because we call that current capital, but it's basically equipment, some major maintenance. It's rarely the bricks and mortar, but you might see some major maintenance like roofs come out of that money. We give that to the schools every year and they have total discretion over that. The 21 fire districts also receive a portion of the sales tax. Our newest counters receive a portion of the sales tax. And then we get to the portion that we get to keep, which is about 8.5% of the total or 0.6, or six tenths of a cent is the best way to put it. So two and a quarter comes back to us and we end up with six tenths of a cent for the Bucan County general fund. As you look at, yes, sir?
Just to comment on that slide, can you back up?
Okay.
Okay, one is, I want to say how cool that slide is. Okay? And is that being posted, so I'm going to make a suggestion, okay? Is that being posted to where anybody can see that slide? That's a good slide for, for anybody to understand sales tax and how it's distributed. I mean, a, I mean, elementary school could have that, you know, but it could.
We're happy to post it and share it, but we did prepare it for the budget, so it's, this is the first time we've used it, but we're happy to share it.
Okay, so the other thing is, is that if you go back to like the, the, this is, would be a very good visual to explain where the, where the property tax money goes, or where the general fund money goes.
Good point.
Okay, if you could do the roads and, you know, that this is the different places where the money lands, you know, when we get closer to the, to the budget. That's a really, really good visual. And it's a keeper, so.
I'll share that with Jessica.
She might be able to use it on some, some of the other things.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
We look at the, a little different way in looking at the sales tax. We generated in 2016, $331 million worth of sales tax in Bucan County. 226.5 million of it, the big blue area here, went back to the state. There are, there's several boxes here, but basically 42 million of it went to education. 25 million, basically 26, went to municipalities and we and the county end up here with 28.3 million dollars of sales tax. We're always grateful to have it and we are very nervous when they start looking at it, making changes to it in Raleigh. And they tend to do that every, every session. The other funding stream that I want to talk about is intergovernmental revenues. But I found this slide, I really did like it. This is where your federal money goes. So if you take a look at it, if we send $100 to, to Washington, they're going to put it into several of these pots. Social Security, Medicare, Defense, Medicaid, this is to healthcare issue, issues down here, veterans. So if you take a look, it's cleanly in different pots. Well, we do get intergovernmental revenue for paying, they pay us work service and they pay us to reimburse some of our expenses. So coming into our general fund would be monies from, say, Medicare, Medicaid, some transportation, that's not in the general fund, it does come into us, and some housing assistance. So those are the primary areas where we get intergovernmental revenue to operate our budget. And that represents 16.7% of our funding stream. But I think a really much larger point too that we need to make is, in our community, a lot of this money comes back. If we're an aging population, so we have people who receive Social Security, Medicare and Medicaid and some other health issues, health funding is provided for on their behalf and that benefits our healthcare providers. There's food stamps which they receive. So when you look at what our citizens receive, it turns over in our community many times. So the impact we have is not just what you might see in the EMS and human service budget from intergovernmental, it really has a large impact from what the citizens receive also. One other thing we use to avoid having to raise property tax is appropriated fund balance. A fund balance is simply the cumulative impact of revenues less expenditures over the life of our organization. We are required to have a fund balance. And historically, we've appropriated fund balance and have a great track record of not using that fund balance. So if you look over the 10-year period here, 11-year period, you can see we've appropriated fund balance every year and we have yet to use any fund balance and do not anticipate using it in 2017 either, which is something we watch very closely.
So I guess my question is, why are we appropriating so little fund balance when we're asking citizens potentially to have a big tax increase?
Because we've actually cut back on areas in our departments where they, we've known we would have savings, we've already cut back on those to get to this budget tonight. So we don't have as much fund balance to appropriate our areas where we can save. We continue to look at that, but right now, we're not in a position to say we can, we can appropriate 6 or 7 million and feel like we can save it.
So, so the resources are depleted? I'm not following why.
The resources are not depleted. When we do fund balance, we always try to know basically where we're going to save that, what departments traditionally don't spend as much, where we might have different savings. I mean, it's a complex process to sit down and say, okay, we think we will have less expenditures or generate more revenue. And we have used that up and cut departmental budgets back by some of those things. So we won't have those savings and therefore we cannot appropriate as much fund balance. we won't have those savings and therefore we cannot appropriate as much fund balance.
I have to say, I, I think that, I'm actually really glad to see this. The appropriation of a lot of fund balance in the past, I've never, I've never quite been totally, because it's sort of like, we show a lot and then we never spend it, which to me, it's great that we don't spend it, you know, but it seems that if we really tighten it up, then we shouldn't, I don't know. I, I've always felt we should show less plans to do that in the first place, but in the past, just based on the past practice of, of actually finding ways to not need it, it's always worked out in a positive way. But I like the idea of just trying to project as accurately as possible what we anticipate we will need in the departments and forecasting less of it. So I personally think it's, it's positive that we're showing something that is a lot less fund balance used in the budget.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but in light of people paying a lot more taxes, I don't know if this is quite the year to cut it so tight, but I guess we could further explore it.
That's a good question.
So if we look at the combination of our property tax, our intergovernmental revenue, our sales tax and our fund balance, that represents eighty-nine point sixty-three percent of our funding stream for this budget. So that's where we get our money. Now, what do we do with it and why? If you look, we are a creature of it. Counties are created basically to, to administer state level programs and we don't govern alone. We're very much taught some of the things we have to do. So if you take a look at this top box, that reflects the mandated county services that we have. Includes things like public safety, human service, emergency management, property tax assessment, elections, registered deeds, building home enforcement, education in a summary. So we are required to provide those services. Those services represent ninety-two percent of the expenditures in our budget. If you come down and take a look at the blue box, there are things that we can also provide if we want to. They're optional just for counties and there you see we do provide solar and water, water extension. Next box is a little bit hard because it's, it overlaps what both municipalities and counties can do these, but if we stay focused in this box right here, those are the optional services that we can provide. And those include things like our solid waste, our library, our mobility, ambulance services, parks and recreation, stormwater, land regulation, domain of view. So when you look at ninety-two percent of our expenses being consumed by the mandated services, it doesn't leave very much to provide these optional services. So taking a look at the functional portion of our spending, you see that human service is thirty-five point six percent of our expenditures, public safety is twenty-eight point three, education is twenty-three point seven. And in the general fund is where, our general government is where you would see registered deeds, tax and elections. So those are, are the areas that consume ninety-two percent of the budget.
Those are gross numbers, right?
They're expenditures, yes. We have not, I have not made it up for revenue. Just provide you a different way to read it for our tables. But instead of just looking at the functions where we spend our, our money, I thought we'd also look at the nature of our expenditures. If you look, forty-one percent of our budget is sour and benefits and we have almost fifteen hundred employees. Basically seventeen percent is operating expense. I'm in battle with a couple of numbers, I'm. And operating expense for us includes everything from cars to computers to food for the inmates, to medical supplies for the inmates and just office supplies that we need to run our different departments. And then we have program support, which is money that we actually send to other people who control the expenditure of that. It's, there's specific things they have to spend it on, but that includes our contribution to education, contribution to economic development and then our nonprofit recommendations of funding. And then some of our DSS services like Medicaid transport, childcare subsidies, foster care and emergency assistance. If you take a look at those, it gives you a better sense of the nature of our expenditures, not necessarily category. And this is just another way to look at that and it tells you not just the percentages with the dollars, now I've also included the debt service there. Let's talk about the individual expenditures. We are, education is a mandated service area. It's one of, some of the local options you have really are around supplements, but they're very clear about many of the things we have to provide in education. So that's county schools, city schools and the AB tech. I wanted to point out, I thought this was a pretty good graph because we have kids in so many different types of educational units. We have about thirty-eight thousand K-12 students. Sixty-three percent of those are county schools, eleven percent of the city schools, five in charter, nine in private and eleven percent are homeschooled. So if you look, it's, it's a pretty, it's a bigger percentage in private and homeschool than I realized until we did this research. Now, both city and county schools have to share the funding they receive from both the state and the county with charter schools. And you'll see that in their budget when you read the detail. We actually, I think, fund education very well. If you take a look at the, the purple boxes, you can see that county schools and the funding has increased pretty, you know, at a pretty steady pace. Actual city schools has also, there's a direct relationship there and the funding, we have to pay them on an ADM or average day membership basis. It's held pretty steady on AB tech. And if you look, the, on the debt service payments which we've added there, it has gone up over the last five years, but we've opened five new K-12 schools and four facilities for AB tech. In total, our education budget from fourteen to now was up by seventeen million dollars.
I wanted to ask you a quick question, just going back to the previous slide. It is striking to see that eleven percent of local kids are being homeschooled comparable to the actual city schools. I hadn't seen that stop before. Can you just quickly, either quickly review for us or maybe we could get information later about any mandated services that are required to, provided the kids who are homeschooled that the county is responsible for budgetarily?
I'd be happy to get that. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get that for you.
Thank you very much.
There are some new classes we'll put in our budget. One is the Cox Avenue is coming online. We've been, we capitalized interest on that and that's a gorgeous building, you saw it in the video. But it's also a maxed, a maxed out, very, very busy building in terms of what we serve. So the debt service on that is four point seven million dollars. We, I have my paper here, excuse me just a second. A new funding stream is a tipping and community innovations grant for half a million. We do have a couple of state mandated requirements here, some new work coming on NCFAST and some increases in state retirement for our employees. And then we have some debt service and energy utility expenses that are also new to our budget. If you look at our capital projects that we're, we're requesting, it's the lowest number I've ever come in with. This is basically a two point eight million dollar request. The big part of that request is two point three million dollars to do repairs to the exterior of the old courthouse. It is taking water, on water in a couple of places. We've put that off for two or three years and just don't think that we can put it off in the moment and maintain the structure of the facility. So we would finance that and the debt service would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. There's also a replacement of the cooling tower at the first tower of the detention center. Sometimes it surprises me that that is over twenty years old now. We opened it in nineteen ninety-five, so that's done.
Dr. Reed, one question. On the courthouse exterior repairs, which, how much is that again?
The, the cost of the project is two point three million. We would finance that, so the debt service is a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Doesn't, doesn't enable payment of cost?
Yes, it's any.
It's twenty years?
The detention cooling tower is two hundred and thirty-five thousand with debt of twenty-eight thousand. And then we do have some carbon reduction measures that include interior lighting rectifex, some LED lighting and we're replacing some condensing units. So we would finance those also and the debt payment would be, would be twenty-two thousand dollars.
The courthouse is, that's twenty years?
That's twenty years. The others are.
And the slide before, just real quick, the debt service on the HHS campus, four point seven, is that pretty consistent annually or does that drop a bit because of the annualized interest? Is that, and I know it's probably the highest amount it'll be, of course, but.
It is the highest amount. And actually, my next slide starts to answer that question.
Can we, can we just go back to that? So we never formed an equity task force. Those were all under Health and Human Services and I thought that money, one, was coming from the revenue from federal prisoners and also I thought it was already approved and set aside and the tipping grants weren't part of that.
Actually, it was approved for seventeen and we took the money out of fund balance. But it's a new expense. It's a new expense for eighteen.
But we haven't done anything yet with the seventeen.
And if you'd like, we can always remove that and wait until we get results from that. But when we talked about it, it was a three-year commitment, I thought.
Right, but, but, but nothing's happened from seventeen yet.
Okay, then we need to talk that through as we get through the process.
And it was, and they were, we never formed a task force, so they were recommendations from Health and Human Services.
Okay, that's, okay, I'll, I'll make sure that that's noted in the record. Go back to your question though. If you or I go out and buy a house or a car, the payment that we're going to make is the same thing every month for the life of that debt. And that's what most people think of, how they think of debt. But in governmental debt, especially in North Carolina because we have the local government commission and it's critical to maintaining the state's triple A rating and it's also beneficial to maintaining our triple A ratings and acquiring it in the first place, they require that you pay even principal payments. So on your car loan, you got a loan and you're paying a lot of interest in a loan that a principal. But on a government loan, you're paying the same amount of principal in every payment. So your payment starts high, which answers your question about the debt. It starts high and then it makes its way down because you pay less interest every payment and they pay payments twice a year. The impact of that, so you start paying on a million dollars, it's sixty-three thousand and when you get to the end of it, you're paying thirty-four for your payment. The impact is if you look on the left-hand side, you can see if you went out and bought something for a million dollars as, as junky public and had a regular mortgage, you'd pay fifty thousand dollars for, for your payment. At the end of it, you would have paid a million and a half. In government, we start with a high payment to make our way to a lower payment and we pay maybe three percent less, three is, three to three and a half percent less for the, the cost of the project. Doesn't seem like as much on a million dollars. It's a lot, many millions.
A lot, forty million.
So I hope that answers your question. We start high and it makes its way down.
Because I think it would, would, not now, but later, that would, would be a good slide for what the HHS building or whatever.
Would you do that?
I mean, it would show you first, second, third, and you'd be like, it's really. I mean, I know you look at that all the time when you're forecasting, you're thinking two or three years out, but it's certainly helpful to us to see that payment's not always going to be able to settle.
And, oh, sorry. Are all of the, are all of the dead vehicles that are issued, you know, the school capital and others, are they all done on the straight line depreciation schedule or straight line amortization schedule?
They're all done on the government's schedule.
And that does requirement of the state or is that just sort of a good practice for triple A credit rating? Is there actually any optionality around that or is that actually just non-negotiable from the state?
Not very negotiable. And they have to approve any debt we, that we issue. You may occasionally, and I must say, I do think we have one debt issue of the parking deck where we have the, the more traditional flat payment.
What, how total debt?
I've got that coming right up.
You know, a question I have with the debt service, what, it's twenty-year bonds usually, right? What happens when we renegotiate it for a lower rate after five years? Does that start the clock off again in twenty years or does it go for fifteen?
Can't hear you better here.
Sometimes we have that flexibility, but we usually try to just keep it at the same terms.
Good, okay.
Sort of a matching principle trying to.
Right, right.
I think, I think two years ago, maybe two years ago, that that was done and saved approximately five million dollars by, from that exact, exact sum.
And that is something that Mr. Flora watches every day in his dashboards so that we know when something might be eligible for a refund. But go back to Commissioner Cross's question. Our debt balance on July first will be four hundred and seven million dollars and that's comprised of fifty-three point six percent of that is for education. That means a couple of things. We have restricted revenues that we use to pay that portion of our debt. It's Article forty-six and we currently are, are paying for the allied health, public, public safety training facility classroom, their flexibility and their deck. But it also, Article thirty-nine pays for the K-12, so out of the fifty-three point six percent of that debt, of the debt, it has its own unique payment string. I want to move down to the, to the economic development, which is the GE building. It also has its funding string because we get less payments from GE for that. So that leaves us with debt service for public safety and human services and those are both very much core services and that's the debt you see reflected in our general fund budget. Did that answer your question? So let's look at how fast it pays down. Sixty-three percent of our debt that we're, we're carrying right now will be paid off in ten years. And we have what we consider a very aggressive debt payment schedule. LGC likes to see that, the rating agencies like to see that. They want to know that you're going to pay your debt and you're going to pay it aggressively quickly. I think we're fortunate in Buckland County in that over the years we have taken care of all those outstanding needs that we have. So when somebody looks at our organization and, and makes an assessment of it, there's not anything that could happen short of a major catastrophe that would affect our entire community that would throw us into debt. We don't need to build a landfill. Our schools are pretty well taken care of and there's a solid plan going forward. So there's not anything that just tomorrow would say, you've got to go out and build a jail or you've got to go out and build a landfill or. We plan for those things and we've done them pretty well. It took about twenty-five years to get from being in horrible shape to being in the shape we're in today so that we, we can rest without thinking a building's going to collapse on us tonight. But that's why they like to see that aggressive payment schedule in case something does happen so weird. Our debt to asset ratio is very good. We have one point three billion dollars worth of assets and we carry four hundred and seven million dollars worth of debt. And I can't do a PowerPoint just yet without the, the, yes, favorite slide. It's like you have a sixty-one thousand dollar mortgage on your two hundred thousand dollar home purchase. I'm going to thank Dr. Short very much for bringing up the, the House Bill Three, that our lobbying agents, which is the State Association, County Commissioners and two others that we follow, had a different interpretation. So I will follow with them tomorrow to make sure, we were told that everything was pushed off for a year, but I will follow up with them tomorrow to make sure about that. So that part is, is basically better news and, and there are a lot of bills out there that can impact counties, but these are the two that had the, the most financial impact on the, the budget that we were moving through. Senate Bill one twenty-six is about sales tax. If it passes, the factor that you use, one of the factors that you use to calculate our, the sales tax bill get drops from us getting one point oh six percent, percent to point nine percent. The impact of that is we would lose one point four million dollars in sales tax. That bill, the reason we watch it closely is this is not the first time it's been introduced. We, it was introduced last, last session and introduced again this, again, this session. And so we will watch it very, very closely. This year in seventeen, we lost six hundred thousand dollars in sales tax. Last year, you will recall, they expanded the sales tax base particularly to provide funding to smaller counties. They also, it was two years ago they did that, and they also budgeted one point seven, seventeen point six million dollars to hold larger counties like ourself harmless. So it held us harmless for one year, then they did not budget the whole of harmless for seventeen. So this year we've lost six hundred thousand. If this other bill passes, we'll also lose one point four. You know, sales taxes. You know, sales tax is a pretty good growing stream, but, but we would lose not only this but the growth of it.
Does that, does that a standalone piece of legislation or a big part of budgets or is it just sort of a standalone bill?
Not new, it's standalone. That doesn't mean it'll, it'll stay that way as the budget bill progresses.
Sales tax did go up like 2 million from last year.
I mean, we've, we've had good growth. We're a retail community and that's one of the, one of the strengths of that, to give sales, revenue strengths for us. If you're a Madison County or one of the smaller counties, the argument is they need the money to build schools and, but I don't think with the small amount they get that they've been able to build schools with the, the portion they've gotten so far. The budget process is actually very far from over. As Chairman Newman mentioned, we did have a return on the 16th, 12th, or October 4th, where we will hear from, we'll hear about the state, the financial state of the county. We'll hear a lot more about the reappraisal process and the outcome from that. We're going to hear from many of our larger departments to get a high-level overview of what they do, the services they provide for our services. We just still have decisions to make about nonprofit funding, which we may also talk about that day. At the 5 o'clock meeting on the 16th, we'll hear from both county schools and our four We didn't hear from county schools tonight because they don't pass their budget until Thursday night when their board meets. We have 21 fire districts. We're hearing some pretty consistent things. They've got, all have older equipment that needs to be replaced several months to build substations. There are new regulations around safety and the cost of safety equipment has gone up and grants have dried up. But you will hear from them on the 21st and I think they'll have a very organized approach to the, to the discussion. On June 6th, we will have a public hearing on the budget. Another thing that changed last year was any money you appropriate for economic development also requires public hearing. So we'll also hold a public hearing on the Economic Development Coalition funding on the 6th. That's just a new requirement. You'll recall some of the confusion around that from last year. Very few people use that as a justification for a board. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Those are certainly the highlights of the budget. And we have obviously much more to come as we get forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I've just got, I've just got a couple that, and I know this is a living document and thank you for the presentation tonight. I do, I would like an explanation on Ferry Road property, how that's impacted. I think that, I think the public knows about that and I think it'd be good to have a good explanation on, on how that's impacted this, this year's budget. And when the property does sell, how that, you know, would impact future budgets. And, you know, just an update on, maybe even an update on the property, whatever, what do you think would be appropriate? I would.
We did include $6.8 million of one-time revenue in the '17 budget in anticipation of selling the Ferry Road property. We've had good activity on the property, but we don't have it on our hand. We did have someone who saw it yesterday and him missing it, another will be seeing it tomorrow. So there's, there is some activity. We have some, some other people in the community who are taking a look at it too. When we do sell it, it is one-time revenue. So a couple of options we would have is to take it and use it for one-time expenses. If you were to adjust your tax rate for that, it's a, it's a, it's not sustainable because it is one-time revenue. I do think that we will eventually, and I don't think in the distant future have, have buyers for all or a portion of the property. And at that point in time, when we realize, realize that revenue, because we do have to come to you to, to accept the offer and sell the property, you may have ways that you like to use the money or as you look at some of the one-time things that we need to fund. It's not recurring money though.
So we took, so we, we budgeted that we would sell it.
Yes, we did.
Which is what happened. If it was budgeted, that it would be, it would be sold. You know, I had concern with the purchase. I didn't support the purchase, but I know we're aggressively trying to work to sell it, sell it now and I'm hopeful that, so, but wouldn't this, this would be also a one-time impact on this budget?
It would be.
Because of trying to recover from the, the budgeting it and it not sell. So we're having to recover for it in this budget.
We are having to recover for it in this budget and we've had to identify a lot of places that we could cut and hold in, in order to make it through '17 without that revenue stream. You know, there's a chance it'll sell at '18. It wasn't, it wasn't a real good experience to go ahead and imagine it and have it not sell unless we worked to get an offer in the next few weeks before the calendar, I mean, the fiscal year ended. Then it might give you some options on useful one-time expenses. Even if we got an offer to law closing it by June 30th, that's very unlikely.
So I guess what I'm saying is that if it is an impact to this budget, it's, it's an impact to this budget.
It's an impact to '17's.
Negative impact to this budget, which is a non-recurring.
Yes.
Negative.
It's an impact to the '18 budget because that's a revenue stream we no longer had.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm saying as part of our discussion is to challenge us to remember it's a one-time impact here and to not make a, you know, multi-year impact to the, to the public in the right, in our other, in our, in our discussions that we not over. You know, I'm not saying that you're going to overreact to that, but as a group, that we make sure that we understand that that, that amount of money is not, goes in our mind for the next multiple years. That's not going to, that's not going to happen every year.
No, that's right.
And for me, the last.
My.
Mm-hmm. What?
My issue with Ferry Road is it's a one-time occurrence, but why are we telling the taxpayer that you're the one that's going to pick up the occurrence in a tax increase in your property tax? That's what we're doing. But we're not going to go down. We're just going to ask them, give us the money, then you'll figure out. But I don't understand. I've asked a question more than once. When we, when we purchased the land, city of Asheville's supposed to put $6.8 million in the city of Asheville's supposed to cut us a check for $3.4 million. How do we still basically owe $6.8 million and $3.4 million out there somewhere? You know, that's high price. I, I don't, I've asked it and I hate to ask it here, but.
I'm happy to answer it. In the closing documents, we took a check for $6.8 million to closing. That's, that's what the county had to pay for it. And so that's the value that we have on our fixed asset records. The general statute that was written to address selling that piece of property said that the proceeds from that would be split between Henderson County and Asheville and that Asheville had to direct their proceeds to the county to use for public safety, which we did. So it was restricted use coming back in. And I don't know if that answers your question or not, but it was a, it was a several-step process.
I think it does, but just the question is, did the city contribute their half to the county? The answer is yes, they did.
It don't matter if they did. The vote that was made for this property in a 15-minute session is costing the county taxpayers basically 2% under property tax. So it's our stupidity for doing it to start with, buying land on an if. Now we're trying to sell land on an if, now expect the taxpayers to pay property tax on the same if we might sell it still yet, but it's not going to come back. It'll be utilized, the, the money will be utilized in something else in the counties. It's not fired at the taxpayer. That's all I can say. We made a mistake. We need to live with it.
If I may say.
Go back to the house, Ms. Green. The house, if you buy a $200,000 house and you can only afford a $100,000 house, pretty soon it's going to catch up to you. Well, we just got caught up to it. But we have a way to get it. We can go to dad's, I need some more money to fix it with. So that's, you know, that's not the way you fix things in my eyes.
If I might say, had we not put that in as a revenue stream, I would have asked you for a tax rate increase last year. That would have been the only way we would have been able to balance the '17 budget.
Yeah, I'm just, I would just make one comment on this. I moved out trying to litigate the whole history of everything that happened around this piece of property. But just from a budget standpoint, we don't know when this property's going to sell. I think there's, it's a, but I think there's every reason to believe it will sell and there's an appraisal on the property showing that, you know, it's going to probably be $6 or $7 million or something in that, in that range. And at the end of the day, the county will have invested only half of the funding that was needed to acquire this property. And if it sells for $6 or $7 million, we only put in half of that to acquire this piece of property, in the big scheme of things for Buncombe County government, thinking about this purely from a budget standpoint, we are going to come out ahead on this to the tune of several million dollars. So which budget year gets counted in, all these things matter, but in the big scheme of things, once this property sells, the county from a revenue standpoint will come out ahead on this by several million dollars. And that's just, that's just the cash flow reality of it. So just, just to kind of keep in mind that, that that is.
We've already, Chairman, we've already spent that cash flow revenue. We got $3.4 million.
But now we own the land and we can sell it for $6 or $7 million. And when that happens, we will get that and that'll be a lot more than we ever invested in the property. That's my point.
I just have a question, not about reader industry, but so where the money gets spent in public safety, is that what you said?
Yeah, partially spent on the firing range and some other things at public safety training facility. I'd have to pull all of that back out to look at it, but at the time, we were building several things at public safety training facility. It also, in our agreement with them, gave Asheville the ability to use our training circle.
Wasn't it required to spend it?
It was required by statute to be spent on public safety. And when the, when the deal was made, there was the thought that we might do a firing range on Ferry, on Ferry Road and that's why it was restricted to public safety.
Well, I didn't want to, you know, re-cash history, but I think sometimes history is important for people to be able to understand what happened and that we have to figure out a way to lessen the impact as we go forward in the, in the budget process. I'm hopeful that we'll, I'm hopeful that we want to do that. We, you know, we just need to do that and figure out a way to make that happen.
Other questions?
The appeal process.
Yes, sir.
There's quite a few people that have, you know, think it's rightfully so, filed for appeal and, you know, and that's usually a pretty good amount. You know, that's, you know, and I'm not trying to get you to give an amount. You know, I know that's a pretty good amount that, that it does affect a budget also as, as we move forward to June and figure out the budget, so.
And I'm happy to answer that. In talking with Mr. Roberts, we, he took a look at the appeals that we've had filed so far and they gave me an estimate of a $340 million appeal loss, which sounds like a lot, but it's a $36 billion base.
It's actually not a.
It's not a very much.
Actually not a loss. You know, it's actually, you know, the families out there going, "Yoo-hoo," you know, when they get the news that they're, that they're, they revealed their value. We have listened to them and listened to their petition. It's been changed and, and I think I've heard you say that it may not only affect that one person, but if it's on a city, on a block or maybe someone had a home located near something that, you know, impacted the value, that it may impact more than one.
It does. Our property tax base is broken into neighborhoods, unique things. And I'll just use my neighborhood. We have 44 homes. They have appealed something that was just about my property. Then they, I would probably be the only one that, that they adjusted a base on up or down either way. But if somebody appealed it because of the issue with the road or something that, that common infrastructure, it might, most likely adjust off 44 of it.
And I think it's good for the public to know that if someone appeals their own home, that they actually might, they may appeal their, their, their community, their area of the neighborhood, etc.
Is it possible to find out in past rebal years, to find out how close we are to the amount that Gary gives us as far as appeals?
Yes, and I think this year we're lower, we're much lower than we've used, used percentages in the past and closer to 2 and 3% and this is really right out, just shy of 1%.
But it'd be good to find out like in different years, how.
Mm-hmm, we'd be happy to.
Dr. Green, a couple of questions about the appeals process and these may be better suited for a retreat, but do we have data yet on the total number of people who appealed and?
Gary, those were, the appeal process, we're at the end of April, so Gary will have those this week.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
We were like, almost shy of $7,000 when I checked about three weeks ago. But a commercial appeals usually come in at a very nice rate.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sherr, any other questions on the budget this time?
That was great.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have one more appointment to the Land Conservation Advisory Board. Someone like the name.
I moved it with one, Sarah Frazier.
There's a motion, a second further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. On May 16th, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a budget workshop beginning at noon in the first floor conference room at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. That evening at 5:00 PM in this room, 326 at 200 College Street, the Board of Commissioners will hold their regular meeting. Entertained motions, huge or?
Say.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For adjourned.